Welcome, everybody that is joining us this evening. We are going to get started here. We're just at 7:00 PM. So, welcome to the County Commissioner Forum with the League of Women Voters of Corvallis and the NAACP. My name is Jessica McDonald, and I am the president of your local league. What is the league? Who are we? Well, for 100 years, we have been working towards a more perfect democracy. We are proud to be a nonpartisan education and advocacy organization, and we work on issues that are important to you and your family: voting rights, climate change, housing policy, social justice. We're going to touch on a lot of these issues tonight. The league is a place where you can have an impact on issues that you care about. And if you would like to get more involved, I would love to talk to you. As we prepare to submit our ballots to the boxes this year, know that the league is here to support you and your education on the issues and candidates that you are voting on. You can find a wealth of information at vote411.org, which is your one-stop shop for all things voting. Now, I have the good fortune to introduce a representative from our co-host, the Corvallis Albany Branch of the NAACP, Angel Harris, president of the chapter. Welcome so much.
Thank you, Jessica. It is great to be here and to partner with the League of Women Voters. My name is Angel Harris, and I am the president of the Corvallis Albany NAACP, which stands for the National Association for the Advancement of Color People. We were established in 1909 as a local chapter here in 1971 in Corvallis. We are the oldest civil rights organization in the United States. And we are all about fighting for equality of rights as well as equity when it comes to political, social, environmental justice. You name it, we are in there. And so, this year is a very important year for us to exercise our right to vote. Please vote. Please be educated on who you're voting for. It's very important. So, being a part of this forum is an honor. And again, vote. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Jessica. Thanks, Angel. And welcome to the League of Women Voters Corvallis Forum for County Commission Candidates. I'm Mike McEnell, your moderator for tonight. In a minute, I'll briefly introduce the candidates. But first, a word about this year's election for the Benton County Board of Commissioners. This is the first Benton County election that will use ranked choice voting, which county voters approved in 2016. So, instead of voting for one candidate when you get your ballot, you'll list all three candidates, or in position three, all two candidates, in order of preference. If one of the candidates wins a majority of the first-choice votes, that candidate's declared the winner. If no candidate has a majority of the first-choice votes in the initial tally, here's what happens: the second choices of ballots cast for the third-place candidate get reallocated among the first- and second-place finishers, potentially resulting in a different outcome. Now, I'm sad to say that explanation makes it sound more confusing than it really is. But all voters need to remember is that they'll be selecting their first, second, and third choices on their ballots, on the commission races. Now, there's more explanation in your voter's pamphlet. You can find it in the middle of the section where Sasquatch Sam, yes, Sasquatch Sam, will explain it all for you. And you can get more information about ranked choice voting at the website bentonbetterballot.com. Once again, bentonbetterballot.com. And now, onto tonight's forum. We have five candidates here tonight, running for position two, are Zan Adro, Mike Beilstein, and Tom Cordier, running for position three. And here tonight are Nancy Wise and John Serna. A third candidate for position three, Cody Sirdow, is not able to attend tonight. Now, we'll start by asking candidates to take two minutes to introduce themselves, and then we'll follow up with a question about each candidate's goals and budget priorities if elected. Candidates will have two minutes to answer that question as well. Normally, we would flip a coin or draw lots to determine who gets to go first. But this year, we decided to use the Secretary of State's random alphabet draw, as it appears in your voter's manual, to determine who goes first. And then, after that, we'll move on to a series of questions. Our first three questions will go to candidates for position two, and then we'll turn to the candidates for position three. Candidates will have one minute to answer these questions. We'll rotate the order in which they answer it, so nobody ever has to answer first or last always. Because we had so many questions submitted to us online, and thanks for that, we will not have time tonight to solicit questions from the audience. Then, at about a quarter after eight, we'll give each candidate three minutes to wrap up, and they can use that time any way they like: to answer a question that they didn't get asked, to expound on one of their previous answers, or to make their final arguments to voters. So, we'll have those candidates presenting those final wrap-ups in the reverse order of the opening statements. It sounds confusing. It should go pretty smoothly. We'll be done, God and our internet connections willing, by 8:30 or so. So, let's begin with our position-two candidates. Zan, your last name shows up first in the random alphabet letter from the Secretary of State's office. You get to go first. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to the organizers with the NAACP and the League of Women Voters. I believe that everyone deserves to live in a healthy and safe community. When I first ran four years ago, I was watching the trends and noticing an increase in the number of people moving here who said they were moving because of climate. We have a relatively abundant water, mild climate, a great college town here in Corvallis, and a beautiful location between the coast and the Cascades. I ran because I want to maintain that livability and to be welcoming and inclusive. That's not always an easy balancing act. My background is in science and conservation. I had leadership roles with organizations Wild Salmon Center and Mary's River Watershed Council, both focused on salmon and salmon habitat, as well as the people that depend on them. In those leadership roles, I did everything from choosing phone systems, making HR decisions and policy, program development, strategic planning, budgeting, you name it. One of the things that conservation demands is a focus on the micro and the macro, zooming in and out, had to think about salmon and the habitat they need in any creek and stream or out on the high seas and managing catch between competing nations based on treaties. The county is no different. You have to focus at the same time on providing the best possible service every day for all residents for the services that we provide, and focus on the long term, on facilities and program investments that might not bear fruit for five, 10, 15, 30 years. We have to think about our children and about having these same functions in place and what they might need down the road, keeping climate in mind and our role in maintaining a livable planet. I love the role. I really am always learning. I'm always striving to do better and making sure that the organization is performing at its best. Please rank me your first choice for position two, Benton County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, Zan. Mike, you're up next.
Thank you. I'm going to give a bit of biography. I'm Mike Beilstein. I've lived in Corvallis pretty much since 1968, although I was gone for five years when I went in the Peace Corps in 1973. And then, I lived on the East Coast for a few years, but I've lived here continuously since '78. I'm a retired chemist. I did research in nutrition and metabolism at Oregon State University for 30 years, and have been retired for over 10 years now. I was 12 years on the Corvallis City Council, so I have some experience in local government. Some of my affiliations and organizations, I was secretary of the Corvallis Branch of NAACP for 15 years. So, the interests of NAACP are very close to my interests. I'm also a member of League of Women Voters, so I'm grateful that these two organizations that I'm part of are sponsoring this event tonight. I'm also a member of Democratic Socialists of America, the Committee of Correspondence for Democracy and Socialism, ACLU. I guess I'm a real joiner. But I've tried over the last 20 years or so to be an activist for peace and justice. And I've come through my work with the Pacific Green Party to realize that human rights and environmental rights really can't be separated. We have to be concerned about the environment if we're concerned about the future of workers, of citizens, of residents in our county and in the world. And that's kind of the view that I take of the world, that we have to worry about the environment. So, I'm running on a platform of a Green New Deal for Benton County. By a Green New Deal, I mean preserving services, providing better-quality services to people in the community while at the same time taking action to reverse our trend towards the cliff of climate change and environmental degradation. So, I would like voters to rank me first, and if not first, second. And I'm interested in voters having a good experience of the ranked-choice voting system here, a better democracy.
Okay. Tom, you're up next. Two minutes.
Good evening. I am Tom Cordier, and I'm running for Benton County Commissioner in position two. In 1960, while I was still in the Air Force, Patricia Caputa and I were married, and we still are. In 1970, our family of six moved to Lynn County and moved to Benton County 26 years ago. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in materials engineering, retiring from ATI Wachang in 1994. I participated in political events in Albany and served on committees for school bond measures and fire police bond measures. My initiative petition efforts now require Albany to get a voter approval before they can borrow any more money by changing the city charter, which the voters approved. I have doggedly fought for a better public school education, particularly in math and science. As a retired for-profit business executive, I learned how to do more with less and separate wants from needs. Over the last three years, the county has hired 100 more employees. So, now we have 540 FTEs with an average salary plus benefits of $110,000 a year. That happened on Zan's watch. Commissioners are planning a fourth attempt for a Justice Center bond measure in 2021 with estimated costs of a few hundred million dollars. The linchpin for that measure is Benton County's small 40-bed jail. The state sized the Lynn County Jail for Benton County use also, but Benton County does not use the 80 beds available in the Lynn County Jail. Instead, they spend $350,000 a year just transporting inmates to a regional facility in the Dalles. We have serious county problems, issues with homelessness, illegal drug abuse, alcoholism, and mental illness. We need to strike a balance between providing needed services and attracting more who want services without cost.
Okay, Tom, thanks. You can come back to those issues later, but your two minutes are up. Let's go now to position three. Nancy, you speak first on this first question. I'm just introducing yourself and talking about why you ran for the office. Oh, you're muted.
I think I'd have this down by now. Thank you, Mike. Hello, everyone. I'm Nancy Wise, and I am running for Benton County Commissioner because I love this community and want to see an inclusive, vibrant, healthy place for everyone. I am well-suited for this position because of my experience in local government and within Benton County government. I'm in my second term as a Corvallis City Councilor and am the current vice president of the Corvallis City Council. In addition, I'm also the chair of the Benton County Planning Commission, and I also serve on the Benton County Budget Committee. As a city councilor, I have been involved in a lot of joint-city-county work, such as the formation of the 9-on-1 Service District and the HOPE Board, the Home Opportunity Planning and Equity Advisory Board. With this experience under my belt, I will be ready to roll up my sleeves on day one and get to work as a county commissioner.
And John, you're next on this question. Introduce yourself.
Sure. Thanks, Mike. Yeah. Hi, I'm John Serna. I'm the Republican candidate for this position, running against Nancy. And I agree with her that we really want to keep this county a good place to live. I've had a large variety of life experiences that allow me to relate to the many problems people here may face. So, I just want to go through them. I grew up on the South Side of Chicago, where high school thugs shipped on the rest of us for spare change. I worked at many jobs throughout this great country, including at minimum wage, office help, trash pickup, combat infantrymen in Vietnam, computer programmer, and civil engineer. Along the way, I picked up a doctorate in environmental science and engineering, where, as a generalist, I learned to use experts to solve environmental problems. My last job was supervising a diverse professional workforce while representing California in negotiations over the Truckee River in Lake Tahoe, involving then-Senator Reed from the Nevada side. Unfortunately, I've also had to go through a divorce with the usual parenting schedule. After getting remarried, I worked while my wife managed our four kids. I've since managed our four kids while my wife worked. And most difficult, I've had to raise two small kids myself while watching my then-wife slowly succumb to cancer. But I'm now happily remarried again. As the saying goes, "What doesn't kill you makes you stronger." As for why I chose to run, 15 years ago, my late wife and I decided this community was the best place to live and raise kids in the U.S. So, we bought a house here. It took, after she died, it took a while to get my new wife to move here. But now, we really enjoy it and plan to live out the rest of our days here. So, I'd like this community to stay healthy and good for everybody. However, I now see many problems that challenge our community. To address these, I've been active as a volunteer in work like the Community Emergency Response Team and Benton County's Environmental Issues Advisory Committee. But given my education and experience, I really believe I could be much more effective in joining the other two commissioners and serving our community. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Let's go to question two, and we'll start. We'll go back to position two. And Mike, you go first. The question is, tell us about your goals and budget priorities for your term if you're elected. And again, two minutes to answer this question.
Thank you. I think my budget priorities are probably a bit different from other candidates and sitting commissioners because I think that the whole United States has been on a tax holiday starting since 1970, and especially in Oregon with Measure 5 and 50. We've really been strangling local governments. So, my biggest budget priority will be to have a bigger budget. I think we need to start taxing. I think we should certainly tax those things which are contributing to climate change, that is fossil fuel use, so fuel for vehicles. We need to tax on that. We need to tax meat because we need to encourage people to stop eating so much meat. Beyond what we can use that money for is to develop housing, which is severely needed. And I'm a strong believer in public housing. I think that we may require private partnerships, but we need more housing here that can be done through, that's with public involvement. I'd say as well, we need to have good-quality health department services. And I think nobody in Benton County should be without access to healthcare. And we can do that through, regardless of what's done statewide and nationally, I think we can contribute to solving the healthcare crisis by having a strong public health department, including mental health services. I probably used up more than my time, so I'll stop now. Thanks.
Tom, you're next on this question. What would be your goals if elected? What would be your budget priorities? It looks like you're muted too, Tom. There we go.
Okay. I will paint a picture that's different from Mike's, a picture of his vision. I believe we should have smaller government, and the government that we have needs to be accountable for the money that they receive. And what I've learned looking at this bond measure is that as of the end of January of 2019, there are several items that can be done right now instead of advocating for a new jail and all of these new buildings and all those expenses. And so, what I expect to accomplish would be to reduce government employee costs by reducing headcount. I want to develop metrics which are missing according to the assessment report, the assessment summary, metrics for evaluating effectiveness with respect to mental illness and homelessness. I want to reduce the scope and cost of the proposed Justice Center bond measure. I want to better represent voters outside of Corvallis. Corvallis has a huge shadow on what the county does, and that needs to be minimized. I also would want to develop contracts with Oregon's public safety officials to clearly define the rules of engagement with respect to protests which might damage people or property. Immediate detention for the first instance would be a necessity. And I want to reduce county operating costs using the suggestions of the staff that's there.
Thanks. Zan, you're next. In a second term, what would be your goals and what would be your budget priorities?
Thank you, Mike. My immediate priority is to do everything we can to contain the effects of COVID-19 so that we can allow all of our residents to continue to work, learn, pray, and play without additional closures. That means doing the best to communicate and support our public health folks to do the contact tracing and investigation, keep everyone healthy. My long-term priorities have remained the same. I want to continue my work on criminal justice facilities and programs. We need the facilities that will support mental health treatment, substance-use treatment, and work release. I also believe that we need to have an evaluation and monitoring system to provide those metrics to detect racial and ethnic and other inequities across the criminal justice system and to make sure that all of our programs are actually producing outcomes that folks coming out of jail will actually make better neighbors than they were when they went in. I think we need to leverage as many funding sources as possible to provide a continuum of housing needs as a public health investment. No roof, no recovery. It's very difficult to get out of addiction if you don't have shelter. The HOPE Advisory Board that Nancy mentioned earlier is putting together a plan for the city and county-wide that will address these issues. I also want to continue to reduce greenhouse gas emissions through fleet electrification, additional solar installation, increased building efficiency with any buildings we renovate or build. And last but not least, make sure that we can provide equitable services and welcoming and inclusive environment in all of our buildings, for our employees, for everyone that lives here in the county, so that there's no one that receives less than just because of what they may look like or where they're from. Thank you.
Let's move over to position three. John, you answer this question first. If you were elected, what would be your goals and what would be your budget priorities?
Okay. Yes, Mike. My goals have been consistent throughout my campaign. I believe four things are needed to keep our community the great place to live that it is: improving disaster preparedness, supporting and fully-funding law enforcement, making government more accountable and fiscally responsible, and ending divisiveness in politics. As for disaster preparedness, my first priority is to ensure during an emergency everyone in our community has good access to shelter, supplies, and communications. For example, I promote interconnecting our water distribution system so if one of our communities loses its water supply during an emergency, others can help out. COVID is an ongoing concern, and after six months, it is time the public had an opportunity to question, comment on the risks and on the less intrusive options for responding to them. Now, I certainly agree with masks and social distancing, and especially, as Zan mentioned, the contact tracing and isolation of infected individuals. But, well, anyway, I'll leave it there. But there should be a public discussion on this. As for law enforcement, my position is do not defund the police nor replace them with popular social programs. Do not allow this community to become like Seattle or San Francisco, where the police are told to ignore shoplifting, sleeping in doorways, and worse. As for making government accountable and fiscally responsible, I promote full disclosure and open doors to all public sector decisions, especially those involving expenditures. As for ending divisive politics, when confronted with a divisive issue, I would try to find win-win solutions that appeal to both sides. I have other ideas for these things, but there's not time to say them now. But I want to move on to budget priorities. I have a decade of experience in multi-program budgeting in state government, including competing for and obtaining state and federal grants to support the programs I was responsible for. As commissioner, rather than focus on the details, I want to determine our overall needs and make fiscally responsible decisions based on a thorough evaluation of the pros and cons of any program or project. Just as important is finding other pots of money, like CARES Act funds, to use when appropriate. One question, I do wonder why the county budget grew at 37% over the past decade, which is three times the population growth, which is at 8.5% over the past decade. In lieu of increased spending...
You can come back to those later, but you've taken your two minutes, and I want to move to the questions.
Okay, sure.
So, we're going to spend some time now for the next three questions with our position-two candidates. And Tom, you get to answering the first question first, and the question is...
Mike, you skipped Nancy.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. Thank you. Nancy, you have two minutes.
Thank you. The priority?
I have no sound.
Yeah. Nancy, it doesn't look like you're muted, but we're not hearing you.
As we navigate COVID is very important. Also important will be the work that takes place after COVID. We can accomplish this by prioritizing the economic development department's work and objectives, which is not an added cost. It's a matter of prioritizing workload activities. Next, I am committed to prudent steps forward on the Criminal Justice Implementation Plan. Benton County needs a jail, but we also need to invest in prevention and treatment programs. Evidence-based data demonstrates that the predicted inmate population in 2040 will be lower if our path forward includes prevention and treatment versus focusing on the accountability piece alone. We will need to make an investment in our community in the form of a bond to make any version of a new jail happen. In addition, I am committed to protecting county resource zones, such as multipurpose agriculture, exclusive farm use, forest conservation, and open space. These are all very important aspects of our county. Clearly, preserving open space and forest conservation is important from an environmental standpoint. But preserving our farm and agricultural land is also very important. We need to uphold the intent of the Development Code, and we need to preserve the qualities that give Benton County its identity. This is not a cost. This is a lens in which to look through as we make future decisions. I have focused on these goals because they are all inextricably linked. The local economy, criminal justice, land use, they all contribute to or detract from livability in Benton County.
Thanks. Well, now, let's go and ask our position-two candidates some of the questions. I'm going to ask you candidates three questions, then we'll turn our attention back to the position-three candidates. So, Tom, it is your turn to go first, and here's the first question. What is your vision of how Benton County should respond to the Black Lives Matter movement to effect change in a concrete and practical way? What would be your specific priorities as a county official to work toward a more inclusive and diverse county with an emphasis on the county's workforce? And a reminder, these are one-minute questions, so one minute.
The commissioners, current commissioners, developed a policy in support of Black Lives Matter. I've read that document. I've read that document, and I don't know what the purpose of that is. Black Lives Matter is now considered by me and many as an instrument of violence and death with Marxist goals. I do not agree that we have a systemic racism problem in the county. I, I would tell you that I've seen a lot of Black Lives Matter signs along Circle Boulevard where OSU students live in rented houses that other people own. And, and the community that I've talked to knocking on doors, introducing myself, don't like those signs at all in their community.
Okay. Zan, you're next. What's the, how should the county react to the Black Lives Matter movement?
The Black Lives Matter movement came about because for so long, black lives have appeared not to matter. Black people die at the hands of law enforcement in different cities across the country, and it happens on a weekly basis. It's a trickle effect. Yet, when there's a crisis like the forest fires, we're very proactive, we immediately all jump in as a community, and we help cats, dogs, horses, cattle, people, everyone instantly, and there's a huge outpouring. But when we see these kinds of chronic problems that affect a certain community, we tend not to react in the same way. When it gets to the point where a police officer can kneel on someone's neck for several minutes until they die, looking straight into a camera, black lives must matter. Brown lives matter, indigenous lives matter, and it matters to us that we understand what it's like to live in a brown body or a black body, and the fact that they are perceived differently, more, more skeptically, more likely to be accused of a crime or of shoplifting when walking into a store. And we have to think of all of those things and take them into account if we want to provide equitable services, a welcoming environment, and to have a government that actually represents all of the people and not just the white population.
Okay, that's a minute. Thanks, Mike. The question is yours now. How should the county best react, respond to Black Lives Matter?
Awesome. Thanks for the question. It's, it's tough. I, I've been trying to educate myself. I've participated in book groups discussing three books recently, White Fragility, Just Mercy, and the New Jim Crow, just to educate myself on what, more on what, what is faced by people of color in our community. And I think that's, that's maybe one thing that we could do is just try to educate the public better. I think the library could sponsor a community book reading, they've done that in the past. And that's, and of course, we have to be careful about what our law enforcement does. I was, you know, on the oversight and advisory committees for the Corvallis City Police Department, and most of the time I was on the, on the city council. And one of the things that Corvallis has consistently for maybe twenty years now is done traffic stop records so that they, they know if there is a bias towards stopping Latinos or blacks in our community. So I think that sort of oversight of police is, is, is necessary, and it's maybe something that should be adopted by the, the county sheriff, although that decision really isn't up to the commissioners since the sheriff is elected separately.
Okay, that's a minute. Thanks.
Thank you.
You should be, come back to later. But next question, and Zan, you're on, you're on tap to answer this one first. County commission candidates currently are elected at-large, that is, everyone in the county votes for every position. One argument given for electing candidates by district is that the current at-large system of voting can discount the concerns of residents who live outside the city limits. What specific take, what specific steps would you take as a county commissioner to be certain you're paying heed to the concerns of the county's rural residents? Again, these are one-minute questions.
I, when I was elected, had, just prior, worked for Mary's River Watershed Council. My work in that role was primarily with rural constituents all across Benton County. And when I came into office, I was committed to representing everyone in Benton County, not just Corvallis. I have regularly asked questions about, what about the county, what about services we're providing beyond city limits? The housing issue is one of those cases in point. We are looking at homelessness not only in Corvallis, but what it looks like out in Elsie, down in Monroe, where it's more likely to be an extra camper in someone's field or tucked into the woods, or people doubled up and tripled up in rental housing rather than on the streets. I think that we just have to keep asking. We need to make sure that we are listening to the city managers and to the elected officials in all of the small towns, including North Albany, not exactly a small town, but make sure that we represent everyone across the entirety of the county as we move forward.
Okay, thanks. Mike, your answer here, how would you, as a county commissioner, how would you be sure that you were paying attention to the needs of the county's rural residents?
It's just the fact that seventy percent of the residents of Benton County happen to be in Corvallis. So, you know, we could go to district-based commissioners. I'm not opposed to expanding the number of commissioners, but even, you know, as it is, you know, it would theoretically, to, to, to represent the county fairly, we would have two commissioners from Corvallis and one from somewhere outside Corvallis to, if, you know, if it's proportionally represented on, you know, maybe with, with more, with more commissioners, we would, we'd always end up with a bias towards Corvallis because Corvallis is the, you know, is, is most of Benton County, if not all. So I think we have to be, you know, concerned about conditions in rural areas, and we need to be responsive to those residents in rural areas. But, but I don't think we can do that at the expense of Corvallis residents when Corvallis is the majority of the people that we're representing on the commission.
Thanks, Mike. Tom, the question's yours. How, as, as a commissioner, how would you be sure that you're paying attention to the needs of Benton County's rural residents?
Well, I don't think it's enough to just listen to the, the people in Monroe, I guess, or the, or the people in Elsie, because the truth, you got to talk to people. I, I ran into a guy over in Elsie that tore down a building that he owned in their downtown area, and he's been waiting six months to get an answer about how to, how to get a permit to, to rebuild that building on the site because of handicap parking issues. I've been down in, in Monroe, I, I don't know if you've ever heard of the thing called the Greenberry Gap, but there's a, the gap down there is in fire insurance. And, and people are driving, are, are spending seven thousand dollars a month on their own fire insurance. I mean, these are, are wealthy people living in, in a, in beautiful surroundings, but, but that issue's been going on for years and years and years, and, and it's, and it's not been resolved. So, yes, I know that Corvallis has a lot more people, but the rural communities are, are important, and even Zan points out, rightfully so, that the homeless people are seen differently there. They look different there than, than we have here in Corvallis. And so those, those, those people don't know how to deal with it. They don't know how to deal with the, with the, with the jail issue where people that commit crimes down there get released. It, they, they just, so, so the question is, you got to talk to people and make room to talk to these people. And, 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 and that's the, that's the only way it can be improved.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Let's move on to the next question, and Mike, you get the, you get the first crack at this question. Many Benton County residents are concerned about climate change and the effects of climate change. What actions can county government take to battle climate change? What specific actions will you take on the commission to encourage residents to take that will contribute to the state of Oregon's greenhouse gas emission goals? And again, these are one-minute questions.
Okay, I, I mentioned the concept of taxing those activities that are contributing greenhouse gases. I'd also say that we can certainly encourage the development, and we can fund the development of, of local power production through photovoltaics. The, the county could, could set up a fund to invest in that. We can certainly expand the, our transit services and strengthen transit services so people are not forced to use their automobile for transportation. I, I, I also, I, you know, the reality is that what we call economic activity is actually destruction of our environment. And so I think reducing economic activity is absolutely essential, so I'd be quite happy to put a tax on employment in Corvallis and use that, use that tax to help develop housing in the community so, to reduce the amount of commuting that's required to, to support the workers here. So I think there are a lot of things we can do locally. Obviously, the, the, there are big solutions that are going to require national, international, and statewide acts, actions. We can't be responsible for, but we can certainly encourage our elect, our elected officials to, to follow those things that, like, the carbon tax is really essential.
Okay, that's a minute. Thanks. Tom, the question's yours now. What specific steps would you take as a county commissioner to help battle the effects of climate change?
A part of it is, is the lack of understanding in the public's view. I'll make a statement here, and Mike will probably disagree with me unless you're muted. Oregon's, my, my information coming from the forests, people out of Salem, Oregon's forests consume more CO2 than is produced in Oregon. So we are more than carbon neutral now. The U.S. has reduced its carbon footprint more than everybody who signed up for the Paris Accords. And, and so I'm really pleased that, that Mr. Trump pulled out of that because it just wasn't going to be right for our country. We have, to me, the, the straw ban, the ban on straws is, is a token measure. It does nothing in terms of really having an impact in the world. We are way down on the list of, of polluters compared to, I mean, I've been to China, I've been around, and so I've seen that in person. And so I, I think that we need to remember too that Oregon's renewable hydropower already produces greater than seventy percent of our electricity. But, but the bureaucrats in Salem refuse to count that power as renewable. And, and thankfully, we're being renewed now with the rains right now. But, but the bureaucrats make hype out of this stuff, and, and that's the problem is that the truth isn't really being told. For example, when the PP&amp;L people come here and try to talk me into buying Blue Power, I, I tell them about, you know, these people are twenty-five years old or whatever, and, and so I ask them, well, how, what are the renewable goals? Well, it's greater than seventy percent. Well, we're already there. I mean, and they don't know that.
Okay. Zan, the question's yours. Climate change and what can the county do about it?
It's difficult for a county to do anything alone. This is a global problem. We are seeing global changes in our climate patterns with the resulting increase in hurricane activity and fierce storms, fires. And we can only really handle this internationally through international cooperation. I, as a county commissioner, have supported federal carbon tax, written letters and spoken to our delegation about these matters. And locally, what I have done is to set, help set audacious goals to be carbon neutral by two thousand and fifty, and to encourage electrification of our fleet, better building efficiency, all of the things that we do have control over as a local government agency. I think the other thing we can do is to look to the state, look at longer forest rotations. As Mike pointed out, our forests sequester a lot of carbon. Those are the kinds of alternatives we also need to be looking at at this point in time. It's really going to be all hands on deck if we don't want our climate to change dramatically. And yes, we are responsible for a very small proportion of the emissions nationwide, but it's going to take lifestyle changes on all of our parts. We are going to make a difference for our children and grandchildren.
Okay. Thanks, Zan. Let's give our position two candidates a rest and turn with a new set of questions to our position three candidates. And Nancy, you will answer, you get first shot at this question, is would you bring anti-racism ideas into your work as a county commissioner? And if so, how? And these again are one-minute questions.
So yes, I, I definitely would attempt to do that. Racism is alive and well, yes, even in Benton County. Implicit bias is real, systemic racism is real. You know, as a white person, I can never really know what it's like or fully understand to have that towards me. So we need to really be listening to the voices of black and brown people. We need to invite them into the conversation. We need to incorporate them. It, I will say, it's not enough to just invite minorities to the table. They have to feel like they are welcome, they have to feel comfortable, they have to feel like they will be listened to, and they have to feel like they will be respected. I know the county has hired an equity coordinator, and I fully support that role, and I look forward to seeing what outcomes and work that they will be doing.
Thanks, Nancy. John, how would you bring anti-racism ideas into your work as a county commissioner? Oh, you're muted, you're muted?
Thanks, Mike. First, I want to go, go in my background. As a senior engineer, you know, I took many place, classes in anti-racism, and it was drilled into me fairly strongly to follow Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, which makes it illegal to discriminate against someone on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, or sex, nineteen sixty-four. If you're concerned about my ability to honor this law, you know, for what it's worth, my first wife was Hispanic. As a senior engineer, I probably had one of the most diverse staffs, you know, in, in my, in my division. You know, I had, I had Native American, African Americans, LGBTQ, and, you know, and quite a few women on my staff too, probably half-women, is what I hired, and I kept on, and we worked together and did a great job together. We had no problems, no accusations of any problems within the workforce, and that was good. That's what I wanted. Now, I want, in conclusion, what I'd like to say is that I support equal opportunity for everyone. I don't support equal outcomes for everyone, and I think there's a, there's a big difference there. We can't get equal outcomes for everyone, but we should give equal opportunity to everyone. And as I, okay.
Thanks, John. That was a minute. And you get first crack, John, at this next question. It's a, the inevitable marijuana question. Do you support allowing commercial marijuana and hemp growing and processing in rural residential areas? Why or why not?
Well, no, I, I don't know if I can answer that question because I do not have enough information. Now, what I do when I encounter a question like this, first, I want to consult the, the community. You know, I live in a rural area, so I know what a lot of rural residents think, but I really haven't talked to any of them about the marijuana issue and, no. And so what, what I do, you know, just to say how I'd approach this issue, first, I break the issue into parts, I'd, I'd get feedback from the community as to what the problems are, bring in experts who can understand each, each part of the issue, you know, look at options for what we might do to address it. And then, then, if it's, if it's really a divisive issue and it turns out to be divisive, you take public input on it, and then you have to make a decision as what's in the best interest of Benton County and its residents. And that's what I would do. and then you have to make a decision as what's in the best interest of Benton County and its residents. And that's what I would do.
Nancy, the same question to you. Do you support allowing commercial marijuana and hemp growing and processing in rural residential zones? Why or why not?
Well, so we do, Benton County does currently allow some marijuana growing and processing. It is, I was on the planning commission when we dealt with some of these issues. Like John said, it's important to hear public testimony. And we did have a lot of public testimony at an open house at the county held. The main concerns that were brought up at that meeting included concerns about odors, leaving one property wafting over to the next, also increased traffic. And as a result, the development code does currently require mitigations for these issues.
Thanks. Well, next question then. And Nancy, you get the first shot at this one. Do you think the county's emergency response procedures, staffing, and supplies are sufficient to address a crisis such as wildfires, earthquakes, pandemics, power grid failures, et cetera, et cetera? What specific steps would you take as a county commissioner to improve the county's level of emergency preparedness?
So there's always room for improvement. I know county staff, in certain cases in conjunction with city staff, are working really hard on this. Brian Lee has been doing.
Nancy, it looks like your internet connection might be, as Zoom likes to say, unstable. Go ahead.
I'm spacing on the second half of the question. I'm sorry.
Oh, it was, what specific steps would you take as a county commissioner to improve the county's emergency preparedness?
So allowing staff to do their job, listening to the recommendations that they give us, letting us know the things that we need to do and saying, yes, you are empowered to do that.
John, the question is yours. What, do you think the county's emergency response procedures are sufficient to address crises? What specific steps would you take as a county commissioner to improve the county's level of emergency preparedness?
Well, this is my issue. I think it's very important that we improve it. I think there is a lot of good people out there that have, and there's a document out there, like I read through this, 100, I didn't read through it, but I skimmed through this 150-page document. And the county is currently redoing it. They put together a general thing, a general approach to this. And now they're looking for specifics. And I'm hoping that over the next couple of years, I can be involved in that effort to decide some, help with some specifics. And so for specific things, first, I propose implementing Shake Alert in this county so staff can get some warning before a major earthquake hits. And even though it's not fully functional in Oregon, Shake Alert can still detect an earthquake starting elsewhere along the Cascadia Fault. I'd also encourage the state to go and get this, get our detection system up to speed. We're still, are very short on doing that. As I said earlier, I connect water distribution systems so communities can, if one community loses some water supply, others can help out in an emergency. Also, I implement what I call 1,000 points of light with solar power systems. So these systems are capable of remaining on after the grid goes down. That would provide emergency power for radios, cell phones, refrigeration for food and medicine, et cetera. Currently, if the grid goes down, I've got experience, I put in a solar system and they said, I said, if a grid goes down, I want to be able to power my refrigerator. And this is, well, you can't do it. I've got a special inverter to do it. They said, well, they changed the code around, so you're unable to do this at this point. I worked on it with the people for six months. And finally, we got, we were able to get my system so that it will remain on and produce power during the day, 120 volt during the day. But I talked to the people in the county and even the county cannot do that. If the grid goes down, the power goes out and all that energy that's produced during the day cannot be converted to 120 volts.
That's a minute. You can come back and talk about that a little bit later if you want. Let's go back. Thank you, position three candidates. That works, that takes us through the first round of your questions. Let's go back to position two and run through some questions. I think we may have time to get to all of these questions tonight, which would be remarkable. Tom, you're going to get the first crack at this first question for position two. Now, the story of how the pandemic has played out in Benton County has yet to be completely written. You know, cases in Benton County are on the upswing as students return to Oregon State. At this point though, how would you assess the performance of the county and the city in dealing with the pandemic?
Well, personally, I think we've been whiplashed by the media, by the government experts. They changed their tune. Even now, everybody knows, I guess the CDC said, don't go into lockdowns. And I support that. I think lockdowns are counterproductive. They cause all kinds of problems in families and the people that are in, need to go into school. I have a grandson who's at West Albany and the course content online is terrible. And the teachers don't like it. There was an article in the paper recently about that. And so that's why I've called before for the immediate opening of public meetings, including the county commissioners with distancing and masks. And those things are appropriate. I mean, I don't know that I have underlying conditions, but I am in the elderly population. And we go out and we don't let this thing control us at all. We don't do stupid stuff either. And so I think that the response that has happened is a learning curve. And everybody that was claimed to be an expert at the start have basically all changed their minds. So that's one of the reasons why I rarely embrace what experts tell me.
That's a minute. Thanks, Tom. Zan, you're up next. How would you assess the county's performance on COVID?
I would give us a B+, A-, I think actually we've done extremely well, relatively speaking, in comparison to other counties of similar size and nature. We have had a fairly modest outbreak. It has increased with the return of students and with evacuees coming into the area from wildfires, et cetera. But we have supported unhoused population to be able to shelter in place. We've provided support to long-term care facilities and have no more outbreaks there right now, knock wood. We've provided extensive masks and protective equipment to agricultural operations, to any other kind of workplace, to businesses. And we have a great communications team that's provided a lot of fantastic health education and just ongoing information about all of the resources available, whether it's rent assistance or other types of small grants for businesses. So we are doing our best to keep the economy humming and to keep everyone healthy. I agree, it would be great to get back to in-person schooling. I think that it's risky at this point in time with the disease burden increasing. We need to protect ourselves and our health system first so it doesn't go into collapse due to too much disease pressure, especially with flu season coming on.
All right, thanks, Zan. That's a minute. Mike, you're next up. You're muted right now. There you go.
Thanks. You know, I'm a biological science scientist. I have degrees in biochemistry and nutrition. And I, most of my work was involved epidemiology and virology. So, and I've certainly followed the, you know, the pandemic news. I guess one thing I'd like to say as far as, you know, my scientific opinion is we're, there's not going to be a post-COVID era. I mean, I think we are stuck with this and the ways we've been adapting our lives so far, I think we're going to have to stick with that. I don't believe that there will be an effective vaccine developed. If it is, it's going to, you know, probably have to be administered repeatedly and to the majority of the population. So I think what we've got now is what we're going to have to learn to live with as far as distancing, as far as remote working. And some of that's good. I think there, you know, remote working is certainly good because it, people don't have to travel to go to work. Unfortunately, it's, this is putting a burden on lower-income people because they are less likely to be able to work remotely. And they, you know, and it's shown up that, you know, that economic status is a good indicator of your probability of getting infected with the COVID. So I think, you know, we're not going to, we're going to have to maintain what we've done. I think I agree with Zan and I've followed, you know, what the Health Department and the Emergency Services in Benton County has done. And I agree that they've done a good job. But I don't, I don't really imagine a future where we are not going to have these requirements for distancing and isolation. So it's unfortunate, but that's where we are.
Thanks, Mike. Zan, this next question goes to you first. And bear with me, it's a kind of a lengthy question. Would you support the formation of a program similar to Eugene's Kahoots, which dispatches a team with a medic and a crisis worker to offer assessments of situations involving urgent medical needs or psychological crisis? In other words, cases that might not need a law enforcement response. If you support establishing a program like this, how would you pay for it? Would you consider a program like this?
Mike, you froze during the second half of the question. Could you repeat that for me?
If you support establishing a program like Kahoots, how would you pay for it? Would you consider taking money from the sheriff's office to fund a program like this?
Okay, thank you. Kahoots has been a very successful program for decades down in Eugene. They support it with, how would I want to say this? It's, they were supported jointly. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble getting my words out. It's a co-response program. Sometimes the Kahoots staff respond directly to folks in mental health crisis and sometimes they respond with law enforcement. And it's dispatched by the 911 district down there. Here in Benton County, our crisis mental health response is not dispatched. Folks call the crisis line directly, whether it's an individual or service providers can also access those services to help clients that are in need. We do have a need for better mental health, law enforcement, joint response. Whether it's a Kahoots-type program that's dispatched by our 911 dispatch or whether it's some other type of a program of, say, mental health folks embedded in Corvallis Police Department or the sheriff's office, we don't know yet. But we are right now studying that question, working with partners at Samaritan Health Services, Benton County Health, Oregon State University, the city of Corvallis. So we will figure that out. How would we pay for it? It depends on the type of program we set up.
Okay, and you're at a minute and you can come back to that later. Mike, the question is yours. Would you support a program like Eugene's Kahoots? And if so, how would you pay for it?
I'm not real familiar with Kahoots. I thought that it was a private organization, not supported with public funds. But I guess I may be wrong about that from the way it's been described by Zan. You know, and so I was on the Criminal Justice Council in Corvallis where we, at the time, when we did a study of mental health issues and law enforcement. One of the, one of the things that came out of that was a mental health directory so that people could file with law enforcement that if someone was dispatched there, that they would send a mental health expert along with them. Unfortunately, people were not willing to sign up for that because by doing that, you're kind of labeling yourself as a as a person with mental health problems who is likely to have interactions with law enforcement. So I think we, you know, when they set up the program, they only got one person actually signed up for it. And that's difficult for, you know, police and dispatch to be able to recognize people who are likely going to need a, you know, a mental health response. I think that, you know, they've done the best they can, I think, in the city police department. And I'm not sure about the sheriff's department, to train people, to train their personnel to respond appropriately and to call in mental health experts when needed. I think, but however, you know, I think the two cases I can remember during my time in Corvallis of police killing people, both involved people who had mental health problems who attacked police and police were kind of forced to kill them. So it's, I mean, it's, you know, the only, the only police killings I know of in Corvallis have been people with mental health problems. So I hope things have gotten better and I hope they'll continue to get better, but I'm not sure what all we can do.
Tom, the question is yours. Would you support a program like Eugene's Kahoots? And if so, how would you pay for it?
I have no idea what Kahoots is. What I do have is a year's worth of experience of befriending a 23-year-old young man who was drug addicted and heard voices continuously. And he was under the charge, he'd been in jail 10 times, diagnosed as paranoid schizophrenic each time. The parole officer said his position was this kid isn't mentally ill, he just needs to be managed better. And the, his, is a person that was managing his case at the at the mental health facility, they were treating him as a, as a normal human being. He was living under a bridge. He had no identity card. It took me five times to the DMV to get him a, just a plain identity card. He was not enrolled in Cover Oregon. So all of these silos, I used that term yesterday, the silos that we have, the court system, the parole and probation system, the district attorney's function, the mental health function, all of them act, they do what each one of them does. But for example, when I finally got this kid a meeting under, because we got him enrolled in Cover Oregon, the doctor pulled up his case because he had been in the hospital several times because he was covered with beg bug bites. And they take a blood sample every time that they show up there. And when the doctor came out after he talked with him and he, he said, this kid has got five different illegal drugs in him. All that time, and he said, I found that out because I logged into the, into the system that we have here. Well, the public, the mental health people weren't even aware, I may be overstating this, but they were not even aware that they could go into the, into the system and find out from blood tests whether he was clean or not. Because every time he came in, he was told, he would say, I'm off drugs. I'm not taking any drugs at all.
Yeah, that's more than a minute. You can come back to that later in your last remarks. Let's go over to the position for a couple of last questions and then go to our closing statements. So this question, John, you get it first. What has the county done well in responding to COVID-19? And what do we need to do better for the remainder of this pandemic and for the next pandemic? And again, these are minute-long questions.
Well, county's done one thing really well and one thing I don't believe they should have done. The thing they've done well, they've hired several people to do contact tracing and so that they can find individuals and isolate them from the rest of the, rest of the population. And that, according to model runs, and I'm going to talk about the Benton County model, Peter Barrowsworth model. They did a, they found, they compared no policy interventions that create hardships on our community, which projected 35 deaths to a, with, to a second, without a public health hero scenario, without policy interventions that projected 22 deaths. And so it's obviously much better to go ahead and, you know, and do this contract tracing and find people with it. Unfortunately, they kind of failed in terms of what I really would have liked to have seen the city and the county do is to have said to OSU is that we don't want OSU students coming here unless they've first been tested for COVID. 28 students came here in the dorms out of 2,000 and were tested positive for COVID. tested positive for COVID. Like 10,000 came in, and we don't know if they were, they had COVID or not. So you'd estimate 150 individual students walking around Corvallis that had COVID, and they didn't know it, and they could spread it to the community. And that's a real problem. You know, there's a lot of other things I could say about COVID, but I don't, I don't think I have much more time. Oh, I do want to add one more thing.
Oh, come back in your closing statement.
Okay.
Nancy, you're up next. What could the county be doing? What, what, what could the county be doing better in this COVID response?
Is that the same question you just asked him?
It's the same question we just asked him, yeah.
Sorry. Well, I, I think the county has done a great job. When the numbers first started rising, the county jumped into action and activated the Emergency Operations Center in partnership with the city of Corvallis. The county has done a great job of reaching out to the community. They have hired extra people for the contact tracing, which was a bit of a scramble. They did pass an urge and encourage resolution to urge and encourage residents to not meet in social get-togethers of more than 10 people. I think that what the county can do is just pay attention, listen to the Oregon Health Authority and the governor, listen to our, our professional staff in the Health Department who, who knows what they are doing, and listen and act accordingly.
Okay, thanks, Nancy. And here's our last question. And after this, we'll go to our, those three-minute wrap-up statements. And John, just to put you on notice, you will, you will go first when we get to those closing statements.
Okay.
But Nancy, you get first crack at this question. Do you support any changes to the justice system, such as increasing jail and courthouse space, or changes to the funding and practices of the sheriff's department? Benton County residents already have repeatedly turned down bids to, to approve a bond to pay for a new jail. How would you make the case this time to a very reluctant electorate?
So I do believe that the county needs a new jail. Offenders know that there isn't real enforcement, so there is no motivation to not offend again. Our failure to appear rate is staggering. This directly impacts our livability, our safety. It has a trickle-down effect, and it impacts our local businesses. I believe the last time that the jail failed was in part due to the location. I think finding a better location and having the criminal justice assessment with all of its very detailed evidence-based practice information and data is, is going to help this time around. We need to invest in our community. Right now, we are spending money in other counties. We are sending people to Norcore. Why would we not invest in our own community and develop an ideal system built on evidence-based practices that is tailored to our needs?
Thank you. John, what do you think? Does the county, does the county need increased jail and courthouse space? And if so, how would you convince people? How would you pay for it? How would you convince voters to vote for a bond measure to build a new jail?
Very excellent question. And, you know, we do need a new jail. There's been three scenarios considered in a previous analysis that came out a couple of years ago. And I would say we start with scenario three, which puts the focus on accountability and in custody treatment. It would also pay for pretrial services, updated classification system, electronic monitoring, and, and, and a treatment and education programs. What's left out, which are, and that costs $160 million, just to, to start with. That's their, that's estimated cost of that. For $60 million more, what's left out is respite care and sobering centers, restorative justice, transitional housing, and has community services. I would say that my, my position is we should only add those if there's a direct nexus between those and crime prevention. And otherwise, we go to the, Benton County has excellent, you know, mental health and other cert, no, and addiction services. They can be brought into the jail after, you know, after the, the police and, you know, sheriff's department do their job. But the, the startup with the 160,000, add in only what's tied to get it, to, you know, to, to prevention of crime. So focus on prevention of crime. That is the most important thing we can do. And I think if you do that, I think you'll see people come on board with what, the new jail.
Okay. Thanks, John. I'll give you a couple of seconds here to gather your thoughts for your closing, your closing remarks. Candidates, again, this is the part of the evening where you get three minutes to talk about anything you'd like. You can answer questions that maybe you didn't get, didn't get asked. You can answer, you can elaborate on previous answers. You can make your closing case through the voters as to why they should mark you as your first choice when they get that ballot. Sometime later this week, I can hardly wake, I can hardly wait for my ballot to show up. So John, these are three-minute statements. That's a novel compared to these one-minute questions we've been forcing you to try to answer. So three minutes, and John, you go first.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Okay. I've been attending most recent meetings of the commissioners, and I can tell you, most of it is grunt work. I don't envy Zan because of that, because, but, but in the long run, this work is just as important to a functioning government, as are many of the policy decisions. Now, we can argue over how to get there, but I believe we all want our community to be a great place to live in. My pledge to you, the listener, is that as a commissioner, I will make, make my decisions based on what is best for Benton County and all its residents. If the majority of residents feel strongly about some issue that I believe is not in our best interest, I will have an open discussion on its merits before taking any action to the contrary. My vote as commissioner will then respect the will of the majority. Finally, I will always listen to experts, and I'm always willing to change my position based on newer, better information. Now, I want to relate something on COVID because we had talked about it. And right now, COVID has, we've seen one death in Benton County, in Benton County, excuse me, since April 15th. One death. During that time, and I'd estimate 300 other, 300 people died of other causes. 10 women due to breast cancer, eight committed suicide. Now, a low COVID rate is good. What's working should be continued. And I like this contact tracing, wearing masks, social distancing, you know, isolating people who, who have, who may have, who have tested positive. Okay. So, but what we really need to do is, now, we need to check what people actually do versus what they're supposed to do. Because people go out there, what, what the county did is they said, there's a limit. No outdoor gatherings of 10 people or more, of more than 10 people. And what that does is it drives people, it can, I don't know for sure, but it can drive people inside where they're more susceptible to COVID. COVID. Also, you're going to see more deaths due to suicide. I'd estimate there's going to be more deaths due to suicides because of social isolation, deferred medical care. You know, we should look at the whole big picture of COVID, not just this one, you know, small, narrow aspect of it, which is, which is good. We're doing good to prevent the transmission in our community. But there's a lot of other indirect effects that we really should look at. And that's what I'd like to have a discussion, a public discussion on. As I says, I'd like to have a public discussion on this, on our COVID policy, see what people think. I mean, it goes well beyond, you know, Benton, the city and the county did project this, no, no more than 10 people on outdoor gatherings. But that's in addition to what happens, you know, what the state has told us that we need to do. But I would still like to have a general discussion on that. I guess, you know, but basically, we need to have discussions on these kind of issues. It's been six months. Let's have a good discussion in the community on what people's actual response to risk is. And also, I'm going to say, one final point is that the Center for Disease Control says that, you know, we're hurting kids, you know, more than, we're hurting kids a lot by keeping them out of school. And I can guarantee, I've got a kid out of school, and they're learning hardly anything at all. You know, my kid can only take literature and history. You know, that's only two courses he's allowed to take. He tried to get into physics, they dropped him out of physics without any, even not even noticing him. So I've been trying to get him into Lynn-Benton Community College. But these are problems that at least give people the chance to talk about them and, and let people, let, let our leaders know what they believe the best approach is. I'll look at that.
That's three minutes. Nancy, you're up. Three minutes. However you, however you choose to use it.
Thank you, Mike. And thank you to the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for hosting this forum. Thank you to everyone watching. In closing, not only do I have the most relevant experience, I will also bring new energy and a fresh perspective to the Board of Commissioners. I have worked really hard the past few years to learn everything I can about the county and to be involved as much as I can. And that is because I truly love our community. I love the people. I love the places. I love everything that makes Benton County unique. Tonight, I am asking for your vote. And if your heart tells you to vote for someone else first, with ranked choice voting, you can vote for me second. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Let's go to position two. And Tom, again, we're in reverse order of the opening statements. So Tom, you have your three minutes first.
Okay, I have a bunch of items written down on little scraps of paper here. So this anti-racism thing that we talked about earlier, I want to tell you my experience. I, I was a division director at Watchgang, and I hired a, and is a Muslim fellow who, whose wife was born in one of the cities that was being bombed at the time. Why that name is gone, I don't. But, but he, he was born in, in the, in the old town in, in Jerusalem. And, and so he came to me and said, because at the time, I think the, the US was bombing Beirut, that's what it was. They were bombing Beirut. And, and the people in the, in, in this part of the planet were, were laughing about that. And, and his wife's mother lived there still. And, and so he said, you know, I don't know what to do. I, you know, this is really egregious to me, and I, it's very difficult for me, because he had to go to that part of the planet every day. And, and so I, I went and, and got the people together. I mean, this guy identified the people to me. And so I went and, and faced him. And I chewed him out one side, up one side and down the other. You guys, what are you trying to do here? Come on, be, be a person. And so later, he actually told me that that, that worked, that they stopped doing that. And so when we talk about this racism stuff and making policies and all this stuff, all this, in my view, baggage, it, it takes people to people to stop that, those kinds of activities. And, and, and I, I was, it was an abhorrent thing for me to see Floyd be, be knelt down on his neck and killed. It's just intolerable. But, but when I, so when I said what I said about Black Lives Matter, you, you may have missed the, the last word, and that was that I don't believe we have systematic racism here. Now, that may come in spades from the university. But in, in terms of our law enforcement and our sheriff's people and our, and our, and our police departments, I don't see that happening here. And I think, I'm in favor of what the mayor talks about when, when she said, look, just stop talking about that stuff, because it just inflates everything. If you just let it calm down, because the, the Black Lives Matter says, no, no justice, no peace. The issue is, you have to have peace first before you can get justice. And that's what Martin Luther King stood for, and these people that are out demonstrating and, and hurting people and destroying property have it just backwards. And yet they say, oh, Martin Luther King was a wonderful guy. So I don't know how much more time I have. Pardon?
You're actually out of time, Tom. Thanks very much. Mike, you're next. Yep. Three minutes, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks to League Women Voters and NAACP for sponsoring this. For the last 10,000 years, humans have found that the more they co-opted natural processes, processes, the better their lives were. That, that is, the more ecological damage they did, the better they lived. And then starting about 200 years ago, when fossil fuels came along and fueled the Industrial Revolution, we've just continued to expand and, and accelerate our co-option of, of nature. You know, you might be aware of it, 96% of the biomass of mammals on Earth is humans and their, and their, and their, the domestic animals. So like we, you know, we, we've just, you know, 85% of the birds in the world are now one species. That's the domestic chicken. You know, so we've really taken over way too much of the, of the natural world for our use. And it, and it's, it's, it's kind of put us in a position now where we are absolutely dependent on fossil fuels. And it's, it's a trap, because, you know, and we, we, we know about the global warming, but in addition to global warming, there's also the extinction of thousands of species of animals, you know, daily. The oceans are acidifying. There are dead zones now in the oceans at the mouth of every river because of the sewage that's, and agricultural runoff that's, you know, produced by human activity. We're losing topsoil. We're losing freshwater resources. Forests, including in the Pacific Northwest, are being stripped, stripped mined away. I, yes, I'll, I'll just comment on Tom Cordier's statement about how we are, you know, carbon neutral already. The, the OSU forestry professor, Bev Law, did a study, and she found that the forest industry was the greatest contributor to greenhouse gases in Oregon, more so than, than transportation or housing or, or, you know, any other, any other source. So we've been warned that by climate scientists, by ecologists, by, by naturalists, that we have just a few short years to change the situation because of, of the damage that we're doing to nature. It can't go on. And, and we're going, you know, we're going to doom our, our civilization if we don't, if we don't solve this. We have to, we've overshot, we've done too much. We need to return to this, living within a solar budget. That is, you know, no fossil fuels, just living on what, what we can produce or what, what we can do with, with solar power. That's through photovoltaics, hydroelectric, and, and wind power. So I, I intend to introduce policies and initiatives in Benton County to protect residents and help them move towards a post-carbon economy. And this will be impossible without buy-in from residents. In the current election, voters can show their support for this transition to the post-carbon economy by marking Mike Bialstein as their first choice in the election. And I hope all voters will vote for me as either first, second, or third choice. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Then the last word tonight is yours.
Thank you. I have spent the last four years in office laying the groundwork for my next term. I was the lead commissioner on the criminal justice systems assessment, and I thank all of you tonight for quoting that document multiple times with respect to our needs for a new jail and a new courthouse here in Benton County. We want to bust down those silos, make sure that we have as effective a system as possible that integrates mental health, behavioral health with law enforcement, so that everyone that comes in contact with criminal justice system ends up coming out of it a better neighbor. I was also the lead for the county on putting together the HOPE Board, Home Opportunity Planning and Equity Board, that's joint with the city of Corvallis. And we are working with a group of more than 20 community members to put together a plan and strategy to address the needs of homeless and folks that are at risk of being homeless in Corvallis and across the county. We are going to have a series of engagements on that while planning over the next couple of months, and hope to take that plan to City Council and the Board of Commissioners this winter. I'd love to continue that work. I believe that I have the relationships, the knowledge, the skills to do that, and to come to the point of solutions for many of these very challenging problems. We'll leverage funds from all the sources we can, state, federal, private grant funds, private and public partnerships, and do our best to not price people out of their homes by a heavy tax burden. The last thing I want to mention is that equity is a real issue. That's one thing that COVID and the racial reckoning has both really brought to light. If you look at any of the COVID statistics, it's the Latino-Latina population, the black population, our Native American and indigenous populations- our Native American and indigenous populations that have suffered disproportionately in terms of the illness and in terms of deaths. It's because they have, and many people in these populations have underlying challenges related to being more exposed at work, the nature of their work, poorer housing situations, and poorer health treatment and less access to care. Those are issues we can address through our Health Department and through the Community Health Centers of Benton County. And yes, that spike in employees that you point to is due to the fact that the Community Health Centers of Lynn and Benton Counties has grown quite a bit to serve the needs of the least able among us to provide care. It provides Medicaid care as well as Medicare and private insurance care to folks all across Benton County and in Sweet Home and Lebanon. I would like to continue to provide the best possible services to all across Benton County. Please rank me number one as your choice for position two. And if not number one, rank me number two. Thank you.
Well, thanks to all of you candidates. No one forces anyone to run for anything and it's a thankless gruel, gauntlet of events just like this. The one good thing is if you're stuck at home, you don't get to eat the rubber chicken at the banquet. So it's probably better for your health this way. I don't know if Jessica wanted to come on to say anything else, but I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters, the Corvallis NAACP for sponsoring it and for inviting me to come on and be part of this. This would normally be the, the point of any of these forums when I tell everyone to drive home safely. So all I can say is it's time to go to bed. Looks like I'm overdressed, but, but underneath the waist, I'm ready to go to bed. So thank you, Jessica, and it's over to you for a last word.
Thank you so much, Mike. Thank you, candidates. And thank you to the NAACP for co-sponsoring this with the League of Women Voters. And vote, vote, vote. All right, thank you, everybody. Good night.